Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, April 26, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video. You will be sworn in, and you will be required to give your name and address. If you are on a telephone, you can press *9 to raise your hand, and then *9 to lower your hand again. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor?
Yeah.
Mr. Hughes has been excused. Mr. Mertens?
Yeah.
Mr. Moretti? I have not heard from Mr. Moretti.
I have not.
Mr. Orozco?
Yeah.
Mr. Sayah?
Here.
Mr. Stanton? I have not heard from him either. Mr. Gonzalez has been excused, and Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, the republic of the states, one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Troply, you might swear it in the professionals, please.
Very well. Professionals, raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and thou be God.
I do.
You.
I see. Tonight, we have Ms. Beam, Mr. Conlet, and Mr. Aguirre. How are you?
Now, from the board's perspective, thank you, Mr. Troply. I want to welcome Mr. Aguirre to the board. You've got some big shoes to fill, but I'm pretty sure that he'll do it just well.
I appreciate that.
Look forward to working with you.
Same here.
Approval of minutes.
I have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers.
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence.
I do have correspondence. Sal Alfieri called me earlier today, and then he sent a follow-up email. He asked that this application for gross and gross associates for final major subdivision, which is on tonight's agenda, be carried without further notice to May 24, and the board is granted an extension of time through June 30 in which to act.
Okay, June 30 is... And then, what's the date of that?
May 24th. With no further notice, please.
And then, we're going to go to June. End of June. Okay. If anyone is on line with, in reference to case number BA 1519F, Gross and Gross Associates, this case is going to be carried to May 24 with no further notice. Expiration date has been granted to the end of June.
And that's all the correspondence I have.
Okay. I appreciate it. Are they going to have enough time to get what they've got to get?
He asked for a month, so he said he should be able to do it by then. I believe it's just some landscaping issues or something, and he also had a conflict for this evening, so...
It's the witness management stuff.
Okay.
Okay. As long as he's got plenty of time to submit, that's all that matters. Okay. I guess we move right along. Next case on the agenda, case number BA 2107. Dana Kelly, conditional use variance, bulk variance, preliminary and final major site plan.
That's actually an error. It's actually a use variance in bulk variances only. That's my typo.
Aha, that's what the correct did.
Yes.
Well, I didn't print it out. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Application of Dana A. Kelly is applicant owner seeking use variance, bulk variance approval to install a residential generator located southwest corner of a two-story, single-family dwelling. The further space of the generator is more than five feet from the dwelling, requiring a bulk variance relief, and also constitutes expansion of a three-existing non-conformant residential uses on the property, requiring use variance approval on premises known as Block 144, Lot 13, 540, 540 through 544 West Farms Road. Expiration date, July 1, 2021. Welcome, Ms. Kelly.
I see she's on here, but I don't...
You need to unmute yourself and bring your video onboard, Ms. Kelly.
Eileen, is John Plaskonka in the waiting room?
No, I have no one in the waiting room except one person, and it's not John. Uh, give me one second.
Mr. Troply, while Eileen is doing that, this, we just need just a majority vote, correct?
No.
No, it's a use variance.
It's a use variance. We need all five of you. And quite honestly, Mr. Chair, I spoke to Mr. Plaskonka, and while I said this was a minor issue and didn't require, you know, an AICP planner, he asked me if he could testify, so he's not here, which makes me very uncomfortable.
Eileen, were you able to reach Ms. Kelly?
Oh, I see Dana Kelly slash John Plaskonka now coming up.
Okay.
Dana, is John with you? I can't hear you.
Well, you have audio difficulties.
I see. Is that John with you?
Dana, we're getting feedback from you because you're on your phone and the computer. You know what? I'm going to remove this one. Right now.
There you go.
Dana, can you hear us?
I am.
Hey. Ms. Kelly, can you hear us?
Can you hear us? No.
No, it's broke up really bad.
We're going to call and...
Okay.
Try to sign off and sign in again.
Yeah, you might have to.
Dana, do you have more than one thing open?
No.
You must, because we're getting terrible feedback from you.
I'm trying to put you on the phone.
You need to log out, log back in.
Everything she had, she should log off.
Log off everything.
Log everything, hang up the phone and all.
Log off again.
Log everything.
Log back in.
They do. I don't... Yeah, there you go.
Hard to believe that we're over a year still doing this.
Yeah. Any word on when we're going to be able to come back?
No, I haven't heard a thing.
Wow.
Governor issued new, uh, reduced the limitations today.
What's that?
The governor reduced the limitations. He eased back on some of his limitations today.
Oh, yeah, I know. Then the CDC is coming out with the common, supposedly commonsense restrictions.
Are we, are most of us vaccinated now?
No.
Oh, all right.
Well, I got the antibodies, so...
Yeah.
Dana, if you're listening in now, you have to press *9 to raise your hand so I can bring you into the meeting.
Hello? Can you hear?
You have video, but we don't have any audio.
You don't?
Now we can hear you.
Yeah, now you're good.
You can hear us now?
Yes, very good.
Oh, my God.
Perfect.
We could hear you guys the whole time when we were talking about being at a beach.
Yes.
Okay, you just might have to sit closer to your source.
I hear you on my, I hear you on my phone. I hear you on my phone.
That's fine. So leave the phone on.
Okay.
Yep. Just leave the phone on. Okay, Ms. Kelly.
Yes.
We have to swear the witnesses in this.
I...
Sorry about all that.
Okay, there's John. Okay.
Okay.
Swear both of them in?
Sure. Raise your right hands, please. Swear the testimony you give this evening, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, thou be God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you, and names for the record, please.
Dana Kelly, K-E-L-L-Y.
John Plaskonka, P-L-O-S-K-O-N-K-A, professional engineer, professional planner.
Okay, and what will you be testifying as for, Mr. Plaskonka?
The planning testimony on this application.
Okay, good. Are you going to take the lead, or Ms. Kelly going to give the lead?
Dana will take the lead. She lives there.
No, I just kind of corrected that. Okay.
I'll comment it all very shortly.
What brings you to us?
So I'm here this evening because I made an application for a generator on my property on West Farms Road, and my permit was rejected. I need a use variance and a bulk variance for the placement of the generator. My property has three existing dwellings on it, so it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. I've been before the board twice before for various, you know, modifications to my house, so this is just another one.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Charlie, I'm going to back up and let you jump in here, and just let's move this through. I don't, quite honestly, I don't...
Yeah, so basically, to kind of give the board some background, like Ms. Kelly said, they've been before the board two times previously. The first time was in 2003, so the site itself has a cottage house in the front portion, southeastern portion of the property. And then, up in the northwestern corner, there's the main residence, two-story, with an attached garage apartment. They got approvals for some building additions to that garage apartment and the second-story main dwelling in the back there. And then, 2012, they came back to the board because they put a roof over one of their decks, which also constitute an expansion of the non-conforming use. So they've been before the board, and pretty much any set improvement that they do on the property triggers this D2. So the current application, they just want to put in a residential generator at the southwest corner of the main dwelling there. There's a bunch of existing non-conformities with the structures that are cited in my letter with regards to, you know, front yard setback for the cottage homes, side yard setback for the main dwelling and the garage apartment, and then also rear yard setback for the garage apartment. Why we're here, obviously, it's a D2 because any improvements, like I said, to the property constitute an expansion of the use. And then also, there's a minor bulk variance relief for the generator. Our ordinance says the furthest outside edge of the generator can be no more than five feet from the face of the dwelling. I measured on the plan nine feet. It looks like to the inside edge is five feet. It's really a small de minimis thing in the way that the ordinance is written. I just have some general questions real quickly for Ms. Kelly. The generator itself, is it going to be natural gas? Are you going to have propane? Is it going to have a separate tank?
It's going to be natural gas.
Natural gas, okay. And you're going to run new services for that, or is that just pull off what you already have to the house up there?
The gas enters the house on the pool side of the property, so the gas line will be run under the house.
Gotcha. So it's using the existing service. You don't need to run anything new from the street or anything like that? Okay.
That's correct.
That's good. And then, as far as the generator itself, it looks like from the spec sheet they provided, Mr. Chair, that it meets the ordinance in terms of sound. It's a maximum of 67 decibels at 23 feet, which is in compliance with our ordinance. As far as exercising it and things like that, routine maintenance, it's just for emergency purposes. If we get a heavy wind or a rainstorm, trees fall down, you lose power, you have backup electricity. Is that accurate?
That's correct, and it will be tested. They'll have the testing set up to be performed at 10:00 a.m. on Mondays.
Okay, so normal between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., that complies with the ordinance? You're putting in a pad underneath it, concrete pad, support it?
Yes, there's a four-inch-thick concrete pad that will go under it that's slightly, slightly larger than two-by-four feet in dimension, just to accommodate the size of the deck.
Three-by-five to give you six inches of overhang? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
So, John, I just ask that you provide a detail on the plan so the code enforcement or construction office can make sure everything's good once it's installed. As far as, so it's at the southwest corner of your house. Do you have any idea how close it is to the neighbors? And is there any existing, like, fence lines or landscaping along your westwardly property line that are helping you with noise and things like that, if it is running?
Yes, there's existing landscaping in the vicinity of where it's going. It's also wooded between my neighbor and I. His house, actually, the house has been vacant for three years. That's next door. That's closest to this generator. But the house itself is about 70 or 80 feet from where the generator is going to be.
Gotcha, okay. And then, just a couple of notes. So obviously, Mr. Chair, it's a development application, so they do need a way of from curb and sidewalk. I looked at the arrows in Street View. There's nothing on that side of the road on West Farms that has any curb and sidewalk, so I have no issue with granting of that. Question for John. So the tax map is, or sorry, the plan's a little unclear whether or not there was any prior right-of-way dedication or not. You know, our ordinance requires for master plan for West Farms Road, 33-foot of right-of-way. Having said that, there's a lot of existing improvements, brick apron and some pillars up along there. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if we want right-of-way dedication. Maybe we can ask for a roadway easement for future purposes, just to get that? Because right now, they've got 16, 16 and a half foot, a half width. You need a 33 feet, so you need to take another 16 feet, plus or minus, of right-of-way or a roadway easement for future purposes.
Charlie, if we were to do that, what would be the setback to the house?
So if you took it as a roadway easement, we don't measure the setbacks from the roadway easement. It would still be measured to the right-of-way as shown. If it was from the right-of-way after dedication, it would be, you know, it wouldn't create any variances for the main dwelling. It would create a new technical variance for that cottage in the front. The one in the front is at like 44.81 feet, so minus 16 and a half feet. You're looking at, let me see if I do my math right, 38, 28, 28.31 feet, if you ask for dedication. If it's a roadway easement, roadway easement serves as a similar purpose without having to grant any variances for lot area or setbacks.
I would just say that at some point, the town's going to require, like, an easement, or I mean, the dedication. So I take no exception to the variances that would be necessary if they gave the dedication. But if you don't get the dedication, and then they ultimately want to widen the road, you know, it's going to become an issue at some point. So you might as well, if it's not egregious, which it doesn't seem like it is, you might as well take it as a dedication and then grant the relief for the setback for the existing condition. It has nothing to do with the generator, but it's simply because she's before the board. We can get the right-of-way that we need, and it doesn't change any development on the property.
John, do you see any problem with that?
No, we will give the dedication to the board to clean things up for the future.
Okay, thank you, sir. My other question, my only question with the generator, is it just for the main house or is it going to supply power to all the houses?
It will supply power to the main house and the garage apartment, but it will supply water to the cottage as well. The cottage is tied into the well, so it will service all three units for water.
Now, the garage apartment, does that have a separate electric feed or is that off of the same feed as the house?
It's off the same feed as the house.
Okay, it's off the same break. So, you know, there's not two disconnects then, correct?
No. It's one combined.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, sorry for interrupting.
That's really, and then the only other thing with Mr. Plaskonka, and it came up the last time around, obviously, there's a pond and it looks like a ditch on the property. John, those are man-made features that have been there for a long time, right? And those are open waters that don't require any regulatory wetlands or repairing buffers?
That's correct.
Yeah, and then the generator itself is, like, set back, like, into the structure a bit, right? It's not like it's extending beyond the southern edge of the structure, right? So even if it was, this is, like, tucked back in and already disturbed, developed part of the property, correct?
That's correct. There's a fence around it. There's landscaping there.
Gotcha. All right, that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Beam?
So the only thing, Mr. Plaskonka, that I would ask is that because this is a D2 variance, is it your opinion that the site can accommodate this increase without a negative impact?
Absolutely.
So as you guys know, this is a D2, not a D1, so the threshold requirement is much lower. It's whether or not the site can accommodate the increase. In this particular instance, while yes, technically is an expansion, it's really not an expansion of the use. It's really just providing for emergency circumstances with the generator. So while they're here for a D2 variance, Mr. Plaskonka's testimony, and my opinion, is similar, that the site can easily accommodate this quote-unquote "increase" to allow for this generator, which would be for emergency purposes. And I would take no exception to the relief that the applicant is requesting, not just what they requested initially, but given the dedication, the front yard setback relief that would be necessary for the existing conditions as well. I would take no exception. I would say to the board that you could grant this relief with no negative impact to the town whatsoever.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Mertens?
No, sir. I'm good.
Mr. Sayah?
Let's see, Barry?
Yeah.
Sir, it seems like it's clear, and I don't have any additional questions.
Okay, Mr. Cantor?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Orozco?
No question.
Okay. My only thing is, is Ms. Kelly and John, you know, you're entitled to a full board. We only have five board members. And out of that five members, you need the full board to vote affirmative. I'm just throwing that out to you. You know, we only have five members here tonight, so it's going to be up to you if you want to vote for it.
I'd like to proceed with the vote, if the board pleases.
Well, I thank you very much. Okay.
Just one more thing. We just want to put on the record Mr. Plaskonka's very brief statement with regard to the bulk variances.
There's a C variance required for the location of the generator, but there's a benefit of this generator helping out the residents here. I think the C variance is a minor issue, being nine feet from the wall instead of five feet.
And the reason for that positioning, just so you understand, is that of that wall of the house that it's being placed along is the only wall where there's no windows, that, you know, the generator needs to be away from windows. But that wall does have two air conditioning units and Bilco doors. So we have to place the generator perpendicular to the house as opposed to parallel, which would have eliminated the bulk variances.
All right, the Bilco doors are to go through, to either down into the basement or to crawl space, correct?
For crawl space, yes.
Okay. Well, hey. There's no further testimony. I'm gonna have a need a motion to open the public.
Chairman, make the motion to open the public.
Motion by Mr. Sayah.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Mertens. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Eileen, at this time, we'll open the public comment or questions. If there is any, then.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public that may have questions or comments on this application. If you do, please use the raise your hand feature, and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. Remember, if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Anybody out there?
There is no one. There's only one other person on the meeting, and their hand is not raised.
Eileen, I see the phone number. Is that?
That's John.
That's.
That's John.
John, put your hand down. Seriously?
I have peppers on my hand.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open the public.
Make a motion to close the public.
Motion by Mr. Sayah. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Cantor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of John?
Yes.
Thank you. John, have you reviewed the March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one Monmouth County Board of Health memo?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, um, do you have any problem complying with the requirement of adding the septic tank and uh as set forth in the letter on the plan?
No, not at all.
Okay, and that'll be also in the resolution then. Just confirming, Mr. Chair, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thank you for picking that up.
And and John, just for clarity, you do have it showing the approximate location on your plan that you submitted to the board. They might not have just seen that on on the plan they received. So, and it's not the vicinity of your of your generator.
Correct.
Hey, Charlie, you have any further?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer, you have any further?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, what's pleasure of the board?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, based on the uh the testimony from both um the applicant and the planner, and what Charlie has put on the record as well as Jen, you know, the um the right-of-way dedication, the um to the roadway easement, the um, the ease, the um the curb and sidewalk relief, et cetera. Um I would like to make this application uh move forward with a a motion to approve. Over.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Take one.
Have a second by Mr. Roscoe. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yep. Also, Eileen, we need we need to put that in our notes. It, you know, I I understand why they're back, but you know, why they had to come for the board was due to the fact it's not just generated, but it it required some variances.
Right.
We we do need to see if we can streamline those generators, and that that could be something that the Rules Committee could kind of up or.
Absolutely agree with you.
They, you know, not necessarily are you always gonna be able to have it five feet off the house. It's gonna be circumstances that you know, it's gonna require a generator to be a little bit further, you know, from a house, so you know, I I think it's something that the Rules Committee could come up, and maybe we could speak to.
I also think that maybe we may not consider this an expansion of a non-conforming use, which is what's driving the use variance. You know, it's not really expanding the use. It's just an accessory, you know, for emergency purposes. So there may be some way that the the zoning language can be modified to allow for these types of uses, if they're permitted, like, you know, if they put them in the right location, but you know, she's here because she has multiple uses, which all were approved at some point by the board, and this is considered an expansion. And in reality, it's not really expanding the use, so there may be a way to like to word it so that these types of things don't have to come for a physical use variance in the future.
You know, Jen, I like to think of it as energy security, right? Basically, that's the new.
Agreed. I I I agree, because you know, when the lights go out for a prolonged period of time, you know, people worry about what's in their fridge, what's in their freezer, you know, those types of things. God forbid someone has any kind of like an emergency oxygen or something at home that needs to maintain some level of security. There 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 is a way we should, you know, and I I think that John, just to go back to Matt and just say that maybe we want to look at some language moving forward that could maybe prevent or, you know, preclude somebody like in this particular instance from having to come to the board for a use variance for a simple generator. You know, if it complies with the bulk standards that we have already identified, even if it's a use variance site, you know, it's a in emergency type situation kind of thing, so we may be able to come up with some kind of way to eliminate their need to come back.
I think Matt does have it on a list of items that need to be looked at.
I'm sure. It's he he probably has a long list of things that need to be resolved.
Yeah. Carrie?
Well, is there any further business of the board tonight?
I have nothing.
When's our next meeting?
Your next meeting is May the tenth. I'll be sending links out tomorrow.
Okay. How how busy are we that night?
Uh, we have two applications on that night.
The day after Mother's Day.
Mm-hmm.
Is is one of those the Ramtown Greenville Road?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be one of these meetings where we're gonna be at like before eight. Yep. Okay.
Right?
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
What's that? Who who made the motion?
Yes.
Jose.
Jose.
Guy on the beach. See all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, guys, thank y'all very much for coming in. I'm I'm glad we got the case off the books.
Thank you.
Well, thank y'all for participating. It was a early meeting, so that that's good.
Yep.
You know, have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Take care, everyone. Good night.
Night.
Bye-bye.